Good morning, welcome to the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, March 28th. Role call please.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Renaud?
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning Commissioners, let's pray. Lord, we're grateful to you for all you do for us. We're thankful even for the rain that's come. We know our agricultural people like to have that rain, like to have that to help the crops grow, so thank you for that. And Lord, we want to pray this morning for our counties and Lord, as we move forward, with the different things that are going on, the exciting things that are happening in Franklin County and City of Ottawa and all the other cities of our county, just good things going on and we thank you for that. We want to pray today for our kids. Spring breaks over, all our children are back to school and Lord, I pray that you would protect them, watch over them. We've seen so many things happening lately and Lord, keep our kids safe. Watch over the teachers and the administrators and everyone that works at the schools and help them to keep our kids safe as they go into those buildings. We continue to pray for our first responders and those that are out there getting it done and Lord, every day I pray for them that they would be safe and as people need them that they'd be there and good things would happen from those situations. We pray for our Commissioners as they make the decisions that they have to make here in this setting and beyond. Lord, help them have wisdom and give them guidance. Lord, as we as citizens, support them and give them our ideas, Lord, we thank you that they listen and they want to be a part of what's going on and keep our county moving forward. Just be with this meeting today, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Scott. Okay, the next item in business is correspondence. Aaron, you want to come on up?
Morning Commissioners. I am here today for kind of some fun, exciting news. Franklin County Government was awarded the Gold Level Breastfeeding Employee Support Award, which is done from the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition and it's the Business Case for Breastfeeding Program. So I have a clock here to present to you all and also the press release. I'll read here the clock, it says, "Congratulations Franklin County Breastfeeding Employee Support Award, Gold Level. Thank you for supporting the well-being of your breastfeeding employees and their families through your actions and policies."
Alright, well great, thank you very much.
You all need to... Derek wants to find him back.
On your desk.
(laughing).
Alright, well thank you so much. Well, thank you all for your support. I will, okay. Thank you. Yep, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your support.
We all recognize those things just don't happen, it's because somebody was doing something and usually above and beyond what is expected of them. So congratulations to our Health Department, Aaron and your staff and those others involved, that's wonderful for our employees. Derek, anything else under our organizational business?
No, not at this time.
Okay, public comment, we have someone signed up, public comment?
Douglas G. Smith.
Okay, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of County Commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become an agenda item at a later date. Okay, Mr. Smith? If you would please, when you get up here, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Doug Smith and my address is 1611 Georgia Road, Williamsburg, Kansas, 66095. Before I start, I would like to say that this is the first time that I've been to a Commission meeting, so if I have a quiver in my voice or seem really anxious up here, it is because I am. I am thoroughly impressed that we say the Pledge of Allegiance and have a prayer before the meeting and I, just personally, I think that's a very nice touch. Thank you. Okay? Hi, I'm Doug Smith, Chairman of the Franklin County Conservation District. Also in attendance today, we have Board Members Dwayne Legault, Stephen Curtis, Cecil Rockhold, and Ron Dunbar, and our District Manager Kerry Harris. As locally elected volunteer leaders, we are dedicated to conserving the natural resources of Franklin County to provide cleaner water, healthier soil, more productive crop and grazing lands to help our local producers do their part to feed and fuel the world. It is because of that dedication, we are here to ask you to reconsider the 2019 funding proposals tentatively approved at your March 14th meeting and then to make the funding reductions more equitable for all community partners involved, not just the two agricultural related partners who have to take, who have taken proposed reductions. During the March 14th Commissioner meeting, it appeared that there was much confusion about what the Conservation District does. I would like to give you a little history about the Conservation District. The Kansas Association of Conservation Districts is a voluntary, non-government, nonprofit, incorporated organization that was established in 1944, two years before the National Association of Conservation Districts were formed. Its members are the Conservation Districts located in the state's 105 counties. Throughout its history, KADC has helped forge key partnerships among federal, state, and local organizations. All are committed to a common goal of wise and efficient conservation practices to protect the state's natural resources. These partnerships spanning more than six decades have been highly effective, mutually beneficial for all agencies involved and the public we serve. On April 14th, 1935, an estimated 300 million tons of soil brew from, blew from the land, that day known as Black Sunday. People of the Great Plains began suffering the devastating effects of a massive drought. It was one of the darkest periods in Kansas' history. Just as every cloud has a silver lining, out of those dust clouds came a firm commitment to soil conservation. The Kansas Legislature passed a bill that created Conservation Districts in Kansas, which was signed into law by Governor Walter Huxman on March 25th, 1937. With that action, Kansas began a commitment to conservation that has lasted more than seven decades. The Franklin County Conservation District was established April 25th, 1941. We have been in existence, serving the natural resource needs of Franklin County residents for nearly 77 years. We began receiving county funding in 1955. In 1965, we began receiving state funding. We are now eligible to receive up to a maximum of $25,000 matching of county funding from the Kansas Water Plan Fund. We received $43,780 in county funds for many years. Even after experiencing reduction in state funds, we did not ask Franklin County to make up those shortages. Over the years, thanks to income generated through the sale of custom blended grass seed for conservation program requirements and equipment rental, we have had a reserve to fall back on to help us offset some of the initial state cuts. The Board requested an increase up to $46,000 in 2016, 2017, and again in 2018. We received a small increase in 2016 and 2017 and finally received $45,000 in 2018. For 2019, we again asked for $45,000 and suddenly, we have been reduced by almost $12,000, accounting for nearly 26% of our operating funds. The county funding received is used to cover the operational administrative expenses directly related to the implementation of and education regarding all technical and financial assistance programs we make available to the taxpayers and partner agencies, including many Franklin County Departments throughout Franklin County. The Conservation District is a public agency. We are not a, we are not a for-profit business and we are not a nonprofit organization. We hold monthly meetings, which are always open to the public, as well as our annual meeting each winter where reports are presented to update the public on services, programs, and finances of the Conservation District. State statutes provide us with very strict operating guidelines, which we follow and implement with great dedication. While we do account for the administrative expenses related to our cost-share programs as a line item on our budget, it seems that the cost-share program payments do not show in our budget. The value of our services have been significantly overlooked. These cost-share payments are processed directly through the State of Kansas Smart System. We do not handle the funds, which is why they are not reflected in our operating budget. A simple example of cost-share program payment is for the Soil Test Program at the Extension Office. All funds for the free soil tests come directly through the Non-Point Source Pollution Control Program, which we administer. After we report the number of soil tests collected by the Extension Office, SMART issues a check directly to Extension. Extension Staff does provide recommendations for fertilizer applications based on lab results, but funding comes exclusively from our program. Also to give you a quick idea of the value of the programs we administer and assist with implementation of, between 2013 and 2017, Franklin County landowners received $271,323.8 in payments through programs administered exclusively through the Conservation District. In addition, during the same five-year period, the Conservation District played an active role in implementation of conservation programs with our federal partners at USDA to bring an additional $830,362.79 worth of payments direct to Franklin County landowners through just two programs.
One minute left, sir.
Yes.
One minute.
Okay. The scope of work on, of the Conservation District cannot be covered in a short, five-minute public comment session. We would be happy to prepare an in-depth presentation to help you better understand the environmental and economic impact Franklin County receives directly through the programs administered by the Conservation District, programs that are not available through other agencies, organizations, or private business. The Conservation District has been in the business of conservation, stewardship, and sustainability to protect water quality and control soil erosion by providing financial assistance, technical assistance, and education related to the conservation of our natural resources while helping people help the land since 1941. We welcome the opportunity to have a more depth conversation regarding the conservation programs that we are dedicated to implementing for the betterment of Franklin County.
Time is up.
Time's up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
I thank your Board for coming in and doing that, presenting that to us and I appreciate the information that Kerry also gave us in the first presentation as well. Derek, you might expand just a little bit maybe on our tax situation, just to kind of let them kind of know where we're at and what might happen in the future.
Sure. Last year, the state of Kansas put local governments under a tax lid. And so what that means is we cannot raise our taxes by more than the rate of inflation, which is usually 1.4, 1.5 percent. And there are certain exceptions to that tax lid, but they're primarily for law enforcement and emergency services. There isn't anything that would really cover our community partners. So at the same time that we're now under this tax lid, the Kansas Department of Transportation is cutting their funding to us, so we're getting less funds from the state. Our health insurance costs are rising exponentially and it's to the point where I worry that with the way our health insurance costs are rising, we might not be able to stay under the lid and still provide insurance to our employees, because we have 238 employees and a 1.5% tax lid. Last year, for a portion of our employees, their health insurance raised about 34%. And so we continue to face financial hardship ourself and so these, I mean, these are the decisions that this Board is being forced to make. We're about to start our individual budget process and I will tell numerous of my own Board Members that they can't have what they feel they need to run their own department because we can't afford to do it. Like I can, I can point at my department heads in this room and tell you, they need more staff to better be able to do their job, but we can't give it to them. I mean, and this is where we're at and so I, I don't anticipate revisiting the funding for our community partners. I think when we get to the budget and are finalizing that, frankly, the only time we would come back to community partners is if we face shortfalls elsewhere within our own operating budget and have to find more savings. I don't think we're gonna be in a position where we have to do that this year, but if something doesn't change, it's coming. Any of you who watched that video last week, I mean, I cannot believe that, I can't believe that anyone would think that the five of them arrived at their conclusions easily. I mean, they moldered over for over three hours and it's because they don't want to make these cuts. No one's happy about it, but we can't continue to receive cuts from the state, unfunded mandates from the state, and continue supporting everything as if that hasn't happened. I mean, we have to start making those tough decisions too and I don't like it. I mean, it's the worst part of this job because I know these guys believe in the Conservation District, I understand the nature of Franklin County, I believe in my Public Works Department, but Jim Hague's not gonna get all his budget requests this year. That's, that's just where we're at. And so I say all that to hopefully help establish an understanding on where we're at. Certainly, I am always available for questions, you are welcome to call me at any time. And again, I appreciate you coming in and talking to the Board.
Our budget then will be finalized somewhere in late June, July, and then there'll be a public hearing in August on the budget, so those will be opportunities to see what the final product looks like and again, at a public hearing, an opportunity to speak as well. Okay, with that said, and I might explain to my fellow Board Members, I didn't mention it to them, rather than have five people sign up and continue that conversation, I gave Mr. Smith the liberty of going a few extra minutes of one person speaking for the group. On the consent agenda today, we have the Commission Meetings Minutes from March 21st. Consider and approve tax change orders in the amount of a negative $10,542.53 and consider and approve the payroll for the pay period of February 21 through March 20 of 2018 in the amount of $1,047,592.16.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Commissioner Howard?
I'll stay on the meeting minutes from the 21st, wasn't here, and I'll vote yes on the claim vouchers and payroll.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. Okay, our first item of business, consider for approval awarding chemical bids. Jim?
Good morning Commissioners. You have approved solicitation of bids for noxious weed at your February 21st meeting. Bids were opened on March 20th at 1:00 PM in the County Clerk's Office with the aid of Janet Staff. The request is a motion awarding chemical bids four and seven to CPS, chemical bids one, two, three, and six to Van Deest, and bid five to the Ottawa Co-op.
Okay, we have those numbers on the back of our packet or inner packet, so if anyone has any questions, why, except the bid?
I'll make a motion to approve those bids.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the bids four and seven to CPS, one, two, three, and six to Van Deest, and bid five to Ottawa Co-op. And I need a second.
Second?
Thank you.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners.
Yes, sir. Our second item is consider approval, a resolution appointing Jamie Wilson as interim county appraiser. Derek?
Yeah, given the sudden and unfortunate vacancy in our appraiser position, we really need to appoint an interim appraiser. Statutorily, we need someone in that position. Jamie Wilson has been the county's deputy appraiser for a number of years. He comes highly recommended to step into this role. Part of that process under KSA 19430 is we have to have the state's approval to appoint him on an interim basis. We have obtained that and in fact, we got their emphatic approval for this. And so I would ask that we go ahead and consider a motion for approval of this resolution. You have any questions about the process, certainly feel free to ask.
Any questions? If not, we need approval of the resolution. I believe it's Resolution 18-11?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 18-11, appointing Jamie Wilson as the interim county appraiser.
Second?
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. Our third item then is to approve the interim employment agreement with Jamie Wilson.
Yeah, this agreement sets out the terms with Jamie. The salary amount is based off a $65,000 a year salary, which we do believe is competitive for the position, given his experience. It's for a period of 90 days because as we've discussed, we are going to go ahead and solicit applications for this position. It's my hope that Jamie applies for this position on a permanent basis because again, he's, he's come very highly recommended. Having said that, I feel like due diligence would warrant us going out and looking at applicants. Nevertheless, this agreement will cover that 90-day period and there's not a lot to it. It's based on a very similar contract that we had with Phil. It subordinates him to the county administrator. You know, he agrees to maintain all of his certifications, the documents kind of speaks for itself, so if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions at all about the employment agreement? If not, I would accept a motion then to approve that.
Make a motion to approve interim employment agreement with Jamie Wilson for services, interim county appraiser.
Second?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Okay, Jamie's back in the saddle and ready to go. Jamie, any comments?
Oh, just thank you gentlemen, this is certainly not the way I wanted to get to this position.
Right. I know it's a difficult time for you and your staff and we appreciate the work you've put in and it's a busy time with the people that are contesting their evaluation and whatever else, so certainly let Derek know if there's anything we can do to help you in that procedure. Yep, you're welcome. Okay, staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I've asked Alan to come today. I don't have much of a report for myself, but I do want Alan to come and give another update on the radio system because we have kind of crossed the milestone there, so.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm happy to announce that we're talking on our new radio system. It's for testing purposes only. The towers went online, all five of them, last week and actually, we also have, Derek's got on his desk in agreement with the state for us to finalize having our towers work with the state system, so we actually have gained four additional towers also. So we have nine towers that our radios will be working on locally, plus 76 other towers throughout the state as law enforcement, EMS, my office, and other responders travel throughout the state. We have communications back to our county and to our dispatch center. Yesterday and today, well actually even Monday, dispatch is receiving training as we speak today on their new equipment, their consoles. The first part of the training for our radios, the basic training on how the portables operate, how the system operates, we had yesterday, we had probably 50 people that attended that training, so they can go out when we get the radios tested and the programming is approved for them, then we'll be ready to push out all of the portable radios. And I've got meetings today on how we can start implementing the installation of the mobiles. So we're moving forward, we've still got a lot of things to do yet. We've got, we've sent out letters of authorization for the counties around us that have the 800 radios, so they can put the talk groups that we've asked, or that we've allowed them to share, so we'll have the interoperability. And in some of those conversations, I do want to say some of the steps that we made in the last few months with dispatch and with the Advisory Board, all of that comes into play. We had some discussion at our Advisory Board meeting for the 911 Center last week about the system and about some of these authorizations. We had another county, two or three counties away, that wanted to use our talk groups and we didn't see any reason for that since we also have the state template in our radios and we can all talk on that. That's the whole reason for the interoperability in the part of this system. Also did receive, and I think this shows that we're moving in the right step, I had the Miami County Dispatch Director made comment on some of the changes that we made that were sounding very professional on the radio system. We've done away with the 10 codes, we've implemented some things to where calls for service, whether it's a page or sending an officer on a call, it's all standardized and the other counties around us are noticing that, that are listening. I thought that was something, I've let Nick know that and Derek know that and that makes us feel good in the Advisory Board where we've got other counties that are listening to us and like the changes that we're making and the steps we're moving to, so. They've also, Miami County now is looking at the 800 system as a possibility, so they've been in contact with us on that and there's two or three other counties in the state. the state that have asked how we've done it, how we financed it, and how we got to where we're at. So to me, that means we're leading again where we should be, so.
Okay.
We'll be another two or three months, so I know everybody wants to talk on the radios, but we've still got to get things in place and make sure that we do it right, so.
Okay.
I would just, if I can, Alan, I would just say that I have heard nothing but good reports from people using the system now, much better coverage, and from what I've been told, it cannot come at a fast enough rate from the, appears the old system is degrading faster than we anticipated, and thank you for your leadership on this, so.
Thank you.
You might tell them about the dead spot down by Lane or whatever you.
Yeah, we did some, I made a trip through the county into last week with my radio, and we knew we had lost quite a bit when we narrow-banded on our radio system five or six years ago. I went to some of the areas, there's an area down south of Lane that even on the map that Motorola gave us that shows a dead spot, I was able to talk out on a portable inside my vehicle. We do have some in-building coverage still that are some issues, but we've also built into the system capabilities that can take care of that, where we have talk groups or channels that are radio to radio, we're used to using them, policies and procedures should take care of that, but they're just, the ones that have commented back to me, we've got four radios out for each one of the users of the system right now, and they're testing them, and the dead spots, they're saying exactly that. We don't, we can't find a dead spot, is what some of them are saying. Some of them said, well, yeah, we may have one here, but it's not much, we can move a little bit, and it works okay. Their mobile radios are not going to have any issue anywhere, and the range that they have, they just can't believe how much better it is than what we're currently using.
So will it get even better once the four state towers come on?
They're already on.
Already in there.
They're already on. When I did my testing in a lot of the spots, there's a button on your radio that you can check to see what tower you're pinging off of. In most places, we're hitting two to three towers, so we have, if we have a tower issue, that's still going to cover us. We've built, this system has built redundancy into it. We've got, it's not like our system now, if one piece fails, we've lost part of the system. This has redundancy built in, so it takes a couple things to fail now to really hurt us, and I think even if we lose a tower, we still got other towers that are available to us, which is going to help us, a part of that redundancy.
It's not over yet, but this is a very difficult project. I mean, there's about a hundred ways it could have blown up, could have bought us a Cadillac when we wanted a Chevy, you could have, you know, gone the other way and ended up with something else that was insufficient, we could have lost consensus with everybody else and not, you know, had all the agencies had some of them drop off, could have missed a big budget deal, I mean, there's just a hundred, there's just a ton of moving parts in what you're doing, and it appears it's going to go well, so.
This is very good, very good. I've been in that dead spot down by Lane at a very inopportune time. Yeah, that's good.
Hey, Alan, you said you did away with a ten code. What would be an example of a call coming in now?
Well, one of the big things is if you receive a call, everybody says ten-four, that they received it, now they're saying copy.
Copy.
Copy. What they've done on the ten codes is there's a, the list of the ten codes, and then there's an explanation of what that means off to the side. One, another one, for instance, is ten-eight, that means they're in service, so that's what they're saying now, is they give their radio number in service, or out of service, or on break. Instead of a ten code saying it's an injury accident, everybody's just saying injury accident. It makes it a lot easier, especially on the training of new people. You don't have to memorize a hundred different codes, so now you just say what it is, and it's.
They do change by, by organization.
Yes, they do. And that's one thing, as we're doing these authorizations to the other counties around us, we're telling them that. We speak plain language, and that's part of what the state wants to get to, and it's also a national standard that we're supposed to be meeting anyway, is plain language, so that we don't have those mix-ups.
One thing I might add, and you guys know I'm not bashful when it comes to gushing about staff, and Lord knows I have about Alan, but one of the things that I don't want taken for granted, I mean, Alan in his career has seen a number of sheriffs, he's seen a number of administrators, he's heard a lot of pitches about fancy things we're going to do, and a lot of that maybe didn't come to fruition, and I think it's easy to get cynical and to get kind of stuck in your ways, but Alan has not. Alan is someone that really, from the very get-go, has seemingly embraced working with me on this project, embraced the changes, and really kind of bought into this vision. We always talk about wanting to be a leader as a local government and setting a template for other organizations to look at and come to, and this project is just such a great example of that. Not only that, but the dispatch transition as well, and how all of those things are kind of intertwined. I mean, Alan has had so many instances throughout this project to say, that's not emergency management, you need to ask so-and-so to do that, but he has not done that a single time. It's always been, what can I do to help? And having an employee like that is just such an invaluable asset to this county, and so I don't want, and I don't think you guys do, but I don't ever want the board to take employees like Alan for granted because Alan is how we get stuff like this done, and I think this is going to be really good for us, so.
Thanks, Derek, but I can also say we can't do it without the staff that I've got, too. Tom has taken that template that we're using, for instance, he's run with that on stuff that he's had from the past on how things work and the advisory board. I mean, it just, it's a group effort, and it takes everybody to work, so I appreciate the compliments.
Okay, I also, when you said something that, you know, you let Nick know and you let Derek know, I think our entire staff, anytime they can let another department know or people in the department, hey, I heard this, or this is going on, this is a comment about, I think that's important for staff, and to let everybody know that, hey, people out there do know when we're doing a good job, when we're being professional, when we're showing a good side to ourselves, and that should be exemplified and mentioned and told to people. So thanks for doing that, passing that on.
Thank you.
All right. Allison, anything? No, Jamie's there. Jim? Janet?
I just want to let you guys know, like Derek talked about earlier, we're working on our budgets. We've asked the department heads to have their budgets back to us by this Friday, and so Derek and I can review those and start getting the books prepared for you guys to get that on the calendar. So we've asked them to really look over their budgets and be prepared to discuss everything that's included in their budget, so we hope all the department heads are doing that. Commissioner Waymire asked me to look at, to provide him with a list of mill levy comparison for the county, and I am working on that. I gave him a tentative draft of that this morning, but it's not complete yet, so definitely when I'm done with that, I will provide that to all five of you so you can see what the progression of the mill levy's been since two thousand to current, so I'm working on that for you guys. If you want to see any other budgetary information, in the meantime, while you're preparing to hold these budget meetings with department heads, and while you take questions from your citizens that you guys represent to answer questions regarding budgets, definitely get with Derek or I, and we're happy to provide you as much information as you need to go forward and make your decisions on the budget.
Maybe along that line, Derek, if I can, township budgets, I think different counties handle those differently, at least in some counties, townships do more than or less than ever, and I'm kind of curious about the township, because when I was with Peoria Township as treasurer, it seemed like we had very little expenses to take care of, and that what the mill levy was or what we were taxing seemed to be more than sufficient, so maybe it's a discussion that I just should have privately with you, but I, you know, for all of us, maybe how the township, what they, because that goes on to, you know, whatever it is, if it's all the same, are they quite a bit different or not, and?
So like you said, townships across the state are very different, like some of the western townships still take care, western county townships still take care of road systems, and so maybe a couple townships partner together and have road crews for, you know, a few townships or whatever. We have county roads, Jim maintains that budget for all of us, which is a much more simplified system where, you know, we can get consolidated rates and we can, you know, provide better services, but we do have a lot more hard-surface roads than, say, a lot of the western counties, so where, you know, we need that centralized system, other counties don't necessarily need that. Our townships in particular are very different across the board for us, so, you know, Peoria Township that you used to help with has a township building, they take care of some cemeteries, they do various different things, and like you said, they do have a significant budget for those things that they're providing to their township members and neighboring township members, because neighbors' townships do also utilize those buildings. Greenwood Township, similar, they have a township building, but then we do have other townships that are actually considering not levying taxes anymore and possibly even dissolving their township board. As you know, Pomona Township used to take care of fire for several different townships, and then last year, they voted to become one centralized fire district with Northwest Fire that covers Appinews, Centropolis, Greenwood, and Pomona, so Pomona no longer has a need to levy taxes, so they are seriously considering this year not levying any taxes at all. They did levy some for eighteen to do their audit and a few things to kind of wrap up their fire services they were providing, but Appinews no longer really has a need, they don't have a township building, so I help them prepare those budgets, I help them, you know, ask all those difficult questions of themselves, you know, do you need to do this anymore, what do we need to do, and then I help them find the answers to, should we levy taxes anymore, should, you know, what can we use this money for that's left over? So I do all of those in July for townships, for cemeteries, for fire districts, and that is a very lengthy process. Some counties have someone come in and do all of those budgets for them. Until last year, Anderson County always hired someone, and she came in and did all their cemetery and township budgets. I do those with the staff in my office, and we personally meet with each one of those townships and cemetery boards and fire district boards to set their budgets.
So in addition to the county tax, obviously, you know, your school districts and all your other districts, there's going to be a township tax on, is there very much difference across the county, our county? There is some?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Well, that's just another thing I was just warning about, the clarification, the mill levies across, you know.
Just for your information, Janet and I have had this conversation a lot, we haven't recently, it's been a year or so ago, but because I have some concerns about a township I'm familiar with, and they were levying taxes, getting a few thousand dollars, didn't need it, so they were donating it to other things, and we talked about that quite a bit.
Well, I think in Peoria's case, they're talking about, I don't know, the Cutler would either put a fire building up in that area, or they would create a fire, a building up of, house a fire truck there
Yes.
to help reduce the distance that that Cutler has to travel.
And they've talked about potentially moving away from the individual townships levying for fire protection and possibly going to a fire, some sort of fire district over there in that area. So, I mean, those are always discussions that are going on. Yeah, so like Rick said, you know, that sometimes they end up being a pass-through organization because a particular organization that doesn't have a direct line for funding, you know, identifies that and says, hey, I can get funding off of that, so, you know, those are things that are happening, especially down in the Central Heights area, because they have some recreation needs down there for the small cities, and their only methods for levying taxes for recreation are either through a city or through the school district. And since that school district is so diverse, it would be difficult for the school district to levy the taxes for that and then distribute it among all the small cities and the areas, but levying taxes at a city level for those county kids to come in and utilize those services really isn't a fair mechanism for, for that, so.
Right. Yeah, it's a tough one. Okay, any other staff?
Before you go to Commissioner comments, one last thing on the budget, because I know things like today are difficult. Janet and I work very hard to cut out unnecessary expenses, and Joy and I are in the process of creating a spreadsheet that kind of details all of the areas where we found cost savings, and maybe some areas where we could find future cost savings. We normally bring this to your attention kind of as it happens, but I think a cumulative document that kind of shows all of it. I say this because I want you guys to have confidence when you have to make these decisions that the county is not sitting on a bunch of waste. I mean, we are finding it and we are alleviating it, so that when we say, you know, this is necessary, I want you to have confidence that it is actually necessary. And so if you ever have any questions about that, or if you have constituents that have questions about that, please refer them to one of us, because I am incredibly confident that we could paint an accurate picture for them that kind of helps show where we're at as an organization, and so please don't hesitate to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Commissioner reports.
I'll start. Yesterday, attended Franklin County Tourism Board Meeting, was fairly short. We talked about advertising in the Ottawa Herald, they have a special going where they could advertise with the city and a couple other organizations at a discount rate, get some advertisement, and they're talking about that. Also, they discussed, they have some new form sheets for sponsorships for the people that are requesting money from tourism and from the gas tax. They made some new sheets, and they were discussing how to get those out and try to get those all in on a timely manner instead of throughout the year, and that was mainly what that meeting consisted of yesterday, and that's all I've been into.
We did a hospital meeting last evening, most of which was as usual. Their gross charges were up so far this year. I'd expect Matt to be in sometime in the near future for an update, so.
Okay.
Well, Derek and I both attended the joint luncheon last Wednesday and represented this board with the city and the school district, and it was a good and informative meeting. Some budgetary discussions were talked about in that meeting as well, and I thought it was, it was a good meeting, and Joy did an outstanding job providing her lunch for us as well, so.
Good. Roy?
I went to the ECAN Board Meeting last night and got a report from Mr. Jackson and a couple board members who were in Washington, D. C. the week before, meeting with, not only lobbyists, but with Representative Jenkins and Senator Moran's group, and just like a lot of, a lot of agencies and stuff, Community Action Agency, which ECAN is one, is, you know, concerned about their funding on a federal level, and when they passed the one-point-three trillion-dollar omnibus funding bill, they were kept at a level, level rate, community action agencies, and I guess that was good news for groups like that that had a level of funding. Anyway, and also, they're watching closely what the state of Kansas is doing for us, same kind of funding and that sort of thing for community action agencies. That was the main discussion last night, we did discuss, and they did their health, health insurance, and they did accept the new policy of health. and they did accept the new policy of health insurance. And I gave Derek a copy of what ECAN was doing for its health insurance because the costs were just skyrocketing. And maybe the county can do something better for its employees far as costs and cost savings. So I gave Derek that information. And that's too many things we talked about last night at ECAN.
All right. I have not attended any meetings since last week. I know there's a couple of things, Joy probably, that we have to respond back to RSVPs. So if there are some of those that we need to be doing that, do it. I, I did give each commissioner of the day the thing about the annual meeting in the southeast Kansas. So I don't know what the RSVP date was, but check on that and let them know if you are or not.
Are you the one turning this in, or is that you, Joy? I, I won't be.
That's your highway, that's your highway meeting.
I have a commitment already on that date, so I'm not that one, whoever it is, so.
Okay. Okay. If there's nothing else, then I'll consider a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay.
All right, a motion to second adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.